Oh, okay.
I have a bunch to add about them.
Okay, everyone, please stand or do the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and free of injustice for all. Okay, thank you. And good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September sixteenth Village of Cornwall and Hudson Board of Trustees meeting. Before we begin, we have a public hearing on the tree preservation law. So I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing on the Village of Cornwall and Hudson's proposed tree preservation law as part of Chapter 153 of the Village Code. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so at this point, the public hearing for the tree preservation law was posted back in August. It's quite lengthy. It mirrors, for the most part, I think ninety-nine percent of it, the town's tree preservation law. I'll have Joe introduce it, give you a two-minute overview, but at the end of the day, it's geared towards developers. This is not singling out single-family homes and regulating the amount of trees that you can take down. But with that being said, I'll have Joe give the two-minute version. We've done this a couple of times in previous meetings, but Joe, if you can give the...
Sure. So, as you said, within the past few months, the town has enacted its own tree preservation regulations. And this is substantially the same as the town's law that was adopted. What we've done so far is taken a look at it. I've proposed a few definitions of construction and reconstruction because they are not clearly defined elsewhere in our code. And I've had some discussion, we've had some instances with our code enforcement officer, where that particular type of work has been discussed. So also, as you said, it does not apply to one or two family homes. This applies to projects that are either commercial in nature or have multiple dwellings intended. Essentially, it's a supplement to an application that would be made to the planning board already. And what would happen is a specific application for an approval to cut a number of trees, it's kind of an extensive or super landscaping proposal application. And it would be reviewed by the planning board as part of the review process for whatever application was pending before the planning board. It's intended to prevent clear-cutting, essentially, and to provide guidelines. They really, now they would be community-wide guidelines instead of town versus village guidelines. So there are more community-wide guidelines to be consistent throughout the town and the village collectively. But as you said, most importantly, it doesn't apply to single-family homes, two-family homes. The village board is not going to become the tree police. This is for developments and providing guidelines for the cutting and clearing of property under development.
Thank you. And before we have any other comments from the public, Dave Carnwright was part of the town tree preservation committee, and Carl and Ted, both of you guys were too, right? Okay. So they have extensive knowledge of the same. Dave, is there anything that you wanted to add?
No. Is this available online?
We posted it on the...
Okay. So what about the red version?
Well, this is the draft. So if you go through the draft, I've indicated, I have some questions, some question marks. So there were actually one or two alternative paragraphs that I've proposed to the village board to say, we could go this way, we could go another way, what would you like to do? And it's probably for that reason, one thing that we had decided, Dave, I don't know if you were here at the time, we scheduled the public hearing for this evening.
That's right.
Knowing that it would be almost definitive that it would be held open again.
Yes.
So...
Right, because at this point, we haven't heard from, we have not received any written comments from the planning board or the zoning board, and nothing from Manny, our building department. I don't, you know, I'm not squeezing you to give any, Manny, but they do have additional time now because we're going to hold this hearing open until next month.
Right, and we have had discussions before, Manny, about the fact that there's no real clear-cutting prohibition in the code. I know that once something gets to the planning board, there's more teeth there. And I did include in the text a definition of construction and reconstruction, which I would very much appreciate your comments on.
I will.
Okay?
I do have a couple of comments for the tree laws that I will read.
Okay, good.
So, that being said, does anyone in the public would like to make a comment with respect to the tree preservation law? Doug, come on up. Please state your name and your address.
I'll be back later, but I'll make it during the public comment on this. I think it's great. I mean, anything we can do to kind of build some kind of, I want to say, regulations or some consistency, and it's just something we'll have to be aware of. So I thank our friends, I thank Dave for working on it, and, you know, anything we can do to kind of help preserve our beautiful landscape, I think is a great idea.
Thank you, Doug. Barbara? Oh, can you please provide your address?
Your name and your address.
Yeah.
Barbara Gostin, Nineteen Homeland. You're saying that the tree preservation law is basically for new construction, new developments, that sort of thing.
And reconstruction.
We hear the chainsaws regularly. I walk, I'm all over the village. We're losing trees, and we're not planting them, just an observation. I think there has to be more in that direction as well. We have to plant, and we have to pay attention to what's removed, where, when, and I think it's kind of a two-way street here. So it's, you know, how much development are we going to have in our little village? I mean, how much? So I kind of would like to see more oversight in the other direction, too.
Okay.
I think you all agree with that, Barbara.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So again, we're not going to close the hearing. Yes, Joe?
Since Trustee Brain is not here, I do want to let the board know, I did get comments from Trustee Brain, and I'll make sure that those are incorporated. I think he copied everybody, and we'll make sure we have a discussion and incorporate those as well.
And, you know, I should have said this upfront, Jim Galliano could not make the meeting tonight. He's down, and he's actually on his way back with his wife Tiffany from Atlanta, visiting some relatives down there. And Bill Brain could not make the meeting tonight, so therefore, it's just the three of us alone with Doris here. So I apologize to Jim and Bill for not announcing it to the public when we first started. So, anything else to add, Joe?
No.
Okay, so we're going to keep this open until next...
Just make a motion.
So that being said, I'll make a motion to keep the public hearing concerning Village Code, Chapter 153, the tree preservation law, to keep it open for, at least through the next village board meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Just to make just a few comments on the work that was done. I believe it took us probably a little bit more than a year, Carla, would you say? About a year? Okay, so this law was widely based off of other communities, other communities' problems, laws that we thought looked good, a little bit from Monroe, a little bit of a couple municipalities across the river. So there was a lot of research that went in, Aaron, Carla, Ted, and the rest of the people on that board. We spent a lot of time on this, just as we spent a lot of time in the village here. I tell everybody on the lighting law, it took a long time to wear everything out. So I encourage the people in the public, especially if someone has a problem with it, to read the law, which I'm glad is up online. And so that's why we're keeping this open, because we feel that people need a little bit more time to digest it. It's not super complicated, but it's...
Lengthy.
Yeah, it's pretty lengthy, and there's provisions in there that people might want to take a look at. And so I'm glad we're keeping it open, but there was a lot of time put in. It wasn't just, you know, we didn't just copy somebody else, as we did a lot of, they did a lot of research on it.
Thank you, Dave, and Ted, and Carl, for that. Okay, let's move in. Next item up on the agenda is public comment. Public comment, Doug, your name and your address.
Doug Land, sixty Deer Hill Road, Cornwall and Hudson. You know, I know that the board is probably somewhat aware of this. I see the code enforcement officer is here, I see the police chief is here. We're creating a really volatile situation with our neighbor at sixty-nine Deer Hill Road. Every time I've talked to the mayor, which has been regularly, and he's been incredibly open about talking to us, the basic response is, there's nothing we can do. That's not enough. I'm telling you, just as a neighbor, and I know unfortunately, Ms. Elliott, who's here with me, we are really the only two neighbors. It's become an untenable situation. In addition to, I think there are nine construction vehicles on the site right now. My guess is none of them are registered, or many of them aren't registered. There's a boat that has become a playhouse, and it's clearly not a boat anymore because there are wooden steps around it that let his, you know, so his kids can jump up and down on it. There are at least twenty truckloads of construction debris. Now, I don't know what the code enforcement officer calls all the rocks that he dumps regularly on his site, but he's in the construction business, and when he gets loads of rocks that he wants to use for his construction business, he dumps them in his front yard. As of this week, and again, you can take a look if you want to drive by, there's another load of nothing but construction debris. It's just piles of mixed construction debris. It's not even... He built eighteen-foot pillars. I don't think there was ever a permit for those. Maybe you don't need a permit to build an eighteen-foot stone pillar in this town. I thought you did, but that's, again, I'm not a code enforcement officer. On top of that, he's now raising dogs in outside kennels that bark nonstop. They started at six AM this morning. They were barking when I left to come here. The only word we got was, we'll call in a complaint. That's not, it's not good enough. I mean, it really, and I know we, I mean, part of the issue is he only has two neighbors. So I guarantee you, if this was on Hudson Street, or Cherry, or Payson, or, you know, this would not be happening. I know we're kind of up in the woods, and it's like, kind of, see no evil, hear no evil. But if there is no town code that can deal with this, we need some town code that can deal with it. Because he's destroying the most beautiful neighborhood in Cornwall and Hudson. And again, I don't know if Ms. Elliott wants to add anything to it, but the dogs have become...
How many dogs, Doug?
I think the code, how many?
Seven or eight, I think I counted the other day.
And they're, by the way, they're only outside. They're not, they live outside in pens. And I think most of you know, yesterday was a beautiful afternoon. We were trying to entertain a few guests on our patio. We could not sit there. And all we hear is, well, there's nothing we can do, or call in a complaint. And I know, Chief Dixon, if we call a complaint, what can you do?
For if we witness a violation, if the dogs are barking excessively, then it can issue a citation.
I don't think he cares. You know, so, and I guess the, so I think Ms. Elliott and I can say, we're both installing security cameras, we're going to install... Oh, by the way, the other thing is, and again, this is of unknown consequence, construction trucks drive in and out of that driveway at all hours of the night. Literally, eleven o'clock at night, I'm walking my dog, and a big construction, flatbed construction truck pulls up. Now, maybe they're coming from a job, but I guess one of the questions I have, and I don't know if this is the town attorney, can I store fifteen unused construction vehicles on my backyard with no...
Well, if he's operating his construction business from his residential property, no.
Again...
And I think there's a limit for the number of unregistered vehicles you can have on the property.
There is a full-size fire truck there that has been there for three years, and I know he says that he is using it for things at his home, that he's doing some things at his home, but I don't know that he has any open permits to be doing some things at his home. And the truck has, the fire truck has just been sitting there backed up to my driveway for three years.
For three years. This is a full-size...
It's a full-size ladder truck. I mean, it's a full-size ladder truck. It's an eighty-four-foot fire truck. So, and now there are also three construction cones blocking his driveway. If he had a fire, no one could get in there.
What's blocking, Buffy, what's blocking his...
There are three big barrels, giant orange barrels blocking his driveway. And so there's no way they could get in there, and then the other way to get in would be through our property, that he has a fire truck blocking.
And again, it's been over two years. We keep on raising it. Again, I don't know if either anybody has a comment, but we kind of, again, we don't want to, we don't want to have to hire a lawyer and file some claim against him, or... But it just feels like the concept of enforcement has just been completely abandoned with respect to...
It just seems like it keeps getting worse. You know, it's just, the dogs have been moved to a kennel that's right along the side of my driveway. He's built two new fences that the dogs are now in with four wood houses, but they're outside, they're huskies, and they're outside twenty-four-seven.
Yeah, they don't go in the house.
Three sixty-five, they don't go inside. They're just outside barking. I mean, I would be barking too if I were in that kennel.
Yeah.
In the sun. I mean, they're in the sun without a cover over it. It's really sad, honestly. So I don't know, you know, I think that he cares about the dogs. I think they're fed, you know, they don't look like they're starving over there, you know, but it's just, it's sad for the dogs, and it's also really sad for his neighbors because we can't, I can't leave my windows open.
Yeah.
Because all you hear is barking.
Okay, well, listen, all I can say is that we will meet with the chief, Joe, and Manny to see what we could do about this.
And I hate to use police time to come up to check on barking dogs, but I will...
Yeah, I get you, but if I were in your position, I would be doing the same.
I will, I mean, we will if we have to start documenting it, unfortunately.
Understood.
But it seems like a waste.
At one time, there was a little bit of progress made, right, Buffy?
There was a, there was a big, he did have a big orange truck, and that is gone.
And he had a bulldozer, too, didn't he?
Those are still there.
Those are still there. So again, I guess maybe I'm suggesting to our council, if the code really does allow this, and there's nothing the code enforcement officer can do, I'd be happy to help look at what we need to do to maybe change the code or modify the code, because it's just not fair. It really is not fair.
Yeah, because that's really the, one of the only driveways that could have a fire truck like that. I mean, that is just, it's really crazy that that's pulled up to my dri, I mean, it's literally the first thing you see down our driveway.
Can you tell if it's registered, Buffy?
That I don't know. I haven't been over there, and I, you know, I don't want to...
I know, you don't want to go on the property.
The code enforcement officer's been on the property. Are all the vehicles properly registered?
I've been there several times. I never seen fifteen vehicles. I'm not saying that he hasn't parked fifteen, but every time that I've been there, I mean, that was that orange truck that was there for a long time, that he got rid of.
And it's gone, yes.
And the fire truck is registered, and it's not any league about having a fire truck. Anybody can have a fire truck. You can cooperate a fire truck for a fire, you can have a fire truck.
But again, that comes back to my question.
Yeah.
So that means, you know, I could put ten different vehicles like that on my driveway, and...
Now, are people allowed to have a camper in their driveways and all that? I mean, so...
Like an RV-type of vehicle?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what made it by our code.
And same thing with the boat, that's...
He told me, I spoke to him the other, he's getting rid of the boat. He should be, he should be out of there within a week or so, according to him.
And the construction material, all the...
He claims all that he's going to pull his property, he's going to clear his property. He's been sick for a very long time. He was in the hospital for a long time, so he hasn't been able to do the work. All those rocks there, he claims, he's going to, he's going to get a permit, but he just powder wraps, you know, it'll be out of time to use it.
But again...
On his property.
He's going to get a permit, so that means you can kind of do anything until you get a permit? I mean, it just doesn't feel right.
Yeah.
Understood.
I mean, can you, can, I don't know if this is a possibility, but can there be timeframes? Like, in the next six months, you have to, I have to see something, or there will be some sort of citation. I mean, it feels like there should be timeframes. I don't know if that's...
I mean, that's a, I'll negotiate with him, and I'll let him know, considering it's becoming an issue now, and I see you guys are coming out, and I see your concern about it. I'll definitely stop by there tomorrow and I'll say that.
And the dogs, there's no...
The co, I looked into that. I saw the dog, I went there personally, I saw the dogs. It's about seven or eight of them, all adults. They all have shelter to, you know, the dog houses to stay in, and that's all they go ask for. The twenty-four-seven dog exterior, you got to have a shelter for the dogs, and he does. There's nothing saying how many dogs you can have, but the noise is a problem. If they were barking, and that becomes a nuisance, then yes, that we can write up.
And what about those pillars? Can, you said there were eighteen-foot, what?
Those giant pillars that he...
The main problem is those construction cones at this point, that you can't get in his driveway. I mean, not that I want to, but if an emergency vehicle needed to get in there, they could not.
Last time I went there, there were cones. I haven't seen those, but I saw the cones.
No, that's what they are, those big barrels.
No, they have those regular cones, like you see on...
No, no, now they have big...
Now they're big barrels.
Now they're big barrels.
Okay, look, we'll, we get it, it's a bit, yeah.
And I know you already know, but...
It's overwhelming, but we'll meet with, again, with Joe, and Manny, and Jim, and we'll see what else we can do. I know it's, you know, piecemeal here and there, but we'll have to just take a closer look at our code, see what we can come up with. We'll do our best, all right? I get you, thank you. Thank you, and sorry.
Buffy, what's your address? Your address?
Six, second.
Six, second.
And his, what's the address, the actual, his actual address?
Sixty-nine Deer Hill.
Sixty-nine Deer Hill.
Yeah.
I've seen it a couple times myself.
I have not been up there.
I have.
Okay. Okay, any other additional public comment at this time? Okay. Moving on, approval of minutes from August nineteenth. We can't, we can't make a motion for that, there's not enough of us here. I was not at that meeting, so we'll have to push that to the next village meeting. Okay, with respect to monthly department reports, let's start with the monthly treasurer's report for August twenty-twenty-four. She completed reconciling monthly bank statements for August. The monthly water report was the village, one-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars eighty-three cents. The town, four-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars and eighty-four cents, totaling six-hundred-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents. Warrant number nine is in the amount of three-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars and eighty cents, and it includes prepays. With respect to monthly revenue and expenditure reports by fund, the general fund revenue is three-million-eight-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and forty-four cents. Expenditures were two-million-eight-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars and seventy-six cents. As for the water fund revenue, it was two-million-five-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand-five-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars and two cents, and the expenditures were one-million-three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventeen dollars and thirty-nine cents. The sewer fund revenue was two-hundred-and-four-thousand-five-hundred-and-eleven dollars and eighteen cents, with expenditures of two-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents. The total receipts were six-hundred, or are, six-hundred-and-six-million-seven-hundred-and-eleven-thousand-forty-two dollars and ninety-three cents, which equates to seventy-seven-point-two-six-five percent of anticipated revenues. There were four-million, four-million-five-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars and sixty-nine cents, which is equivalent to fifty-two-point-seventy-two percent in anticipated expenditures through August. The balance collective for the sewer capital is five-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty dollars and seventy-six cents. That's through August, and the total taxes collected through August twenty-fourth were two-million-nine-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-forty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents. Doris notes here that the ongoing training with the deputy village treasurer and Doris is this week, right? NICOM Megan is actually there now, and she's returning on Thursday, and you're heading out tonight to go up to NICOM to take classes. The night class interest that we, when did we start this, back in July?
I believe it was July, Doris.
Okay, eighteen-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents, that's great. And the NICOM training is this week. So, I know we have to do with the motion here, hold on. For the warrant, right? Do we have to do a motion to accept warrant?
Have the treasurer's report there, warrant number nine?
Yes. So I will make a motion to fund warrant number nine in the amount of three-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars and eighty cents. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, okay. All right, that's one down. Let me just see here, this here, okay. Next up, we have the building department. Dave, or, you got it?
I got it.
Okay.
Report for August twenty-twenty-four, Village of Cornwall and Hudson Building Department. Building permits issued ten, certificate of compliance occupancy issued ten, onsite inspections twenty-three, violations four, stop-work orders zero, municipal searches zero, solar panels zero, fire inspections nine. Manny Carmona, code enforcement officer.
Anything to note, Manny? Okay, any questions for Manny at this point? Okay. Thank you, Manny. Next up, next up, we have the fire department report. Lori Beth, would you like to handle that?
Sure.
Thank you.
August?
Yeah, for August. Yeah.
August twenty-twenty-four, department report, structure fires two, EMS calls three, automatic alarms three, wires down one, motor vehicle accidents one, water rescue one, standby for other departments three, training one, drills four, meetings two. Total volunteer hours are one-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirteen, total events twenty-one. We have identified a replacement engine for E four-one-two. It is a five-hundred-gallon, fifteen-hundred-gallon-per-minute Pierce that is in service in Mount Sinai on Long Island. Mount Sinai anticipates delivery of their new vehicle in October, which is when their old rig will become available. Firefighter Matt Wilhelm has begun his firefighter one training and expects to complete it in October. The department provided our brush truck for standby to the Orange County Air Show on August tenth and eleventh. Twenty-one members plus two commissioners receive training in hazardous materials communications, bloodborne pathogens, workplace violence prevention, and sexual harassment.
Okay, I know the chief is not here, but Rick, our fire, one of our fire commissioners, do you have anything to add?
I made a typo on the monthly report that you received.
That's outrageous.
Total volunteer hours are three-seventy-two-point-seven-five.
Okay. How much was that?
Three-seventy-two-point-seven-five.
Seven-five, okay. Beyond that, anything else to add?
I'll just mention, we had a signal on fire up on Stilman Avenue back at the end of August. It was a boat shelf inside a living room, they caught on fire while the residents were out. They came home to smoke filling from their house and whatnot. We brought in some mutual aid, and we were able to take care of it within a few minutes. I think our first arriving apparatus was on scene within five minutes. I had the line stretched, knocked down the fire.
Excellent. What caused the fire, Mike?
Still under investigation.
Okay. Okay.
There's no suspicion of foul play or anything, it was accidental, but it just kinda pinpointed.
Okay, and now the um. The vehicle, the Pierce vehicle from Mount Sinai, we're locked in on that? I mean, that's.
Um, we're locked in verbally.
Okay.
We don't have any signed contracts, I think they're waiting to get their certainty of their delivery.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, very good. Okay, next up is the police department, Dave, do you wanna handle that?
Okay, monthly police report, August first through August thirty-first, three hundred and seventy-one total calls for service, felony zero. Misdemeanors, fraud, three, criminal mischief, four, harassment, aggregate aggravated harassment, two, arrests, zero. Vehicle and traffic, one personal injury accident, four property damage accidents, twelve traffic summonses were issued, traffic warnings issued, two, parking summons issued, three, traffic enforcement posts, eight, speed and radar signs, posts, two. Non-criminal activity, fire response calls, two, domestic incidents, two, alarm response calls, four, noise complaints, two, serious incident calls, five, animal complaints, seven, disorderly person calls, three. Department assist, three to the town uh, Cornwall PD, three EMS, and three welfare checks. During the month of August, Cornwall and Hudson PD had a new vehicle computers installed uh, into the police car units. These new computers were the result of a New York State Police uh, tracks grant award. During the month of August, Cornwall and Hudson PD had a new uh, Reiki Plus Card Scan Live Scan Computerized Fingerprinting System installed at Cornwall and Hudson Headquarters. This new equipment um, is a result of a recent New York's uh, state law enforcement technology grant award. During the month of August, Cornwall and Hudson PD applied for approximately thirty-five hundred in grant funding from the NRA, National Rifle Association for Training Ammunition for Cornwall and Hudson Police Officer Firearms Training and Certification. During the month of August, Cornwall and Hudson PD participated in Orange County Stop DWI Traffic Grant Funding Endorsement. Respectfully, Stephen E. Dixon, chief, thank you.
Chief.
Anything else?
Yeah, chief, do you have anything that you wanted to really highlight?
Uh, not at this time.
Alright, quick question for you, in regards to the fingerprinting system, um, how much time will we end up spending, how much, I get you, it's, at this point it would be saving, but the question is, is how much time when we were having the officer go up and with, to the town to get them fingerprinted, right? Is that what we were doing?
Correct.
So how long would that whole process take typically, on average, if you had to estimate?
Obviously, when the subject be first arrested, we would have to um, get preliminary information.
Right.
And then do the actual arrest processing with the fingerprinting and photos. We would then have to bring the prisoner, drive them off to the town, to the local PD processing.
Yeah.
And that'd take, that'd take at least an hour or two.
And then on an over, alright, so you're, you're talking at least a couple hours, and on an overnight, on an overnight shift, um, was that always available? Or were they, was there someone at the town available for the fingerprinting?
Well, what we were doing prior to getting this grant is we were piggybacking on the town's existing uh, program, which they had in, in, in force prior to us.
Mm-hmm.
So we, we utilized their system.
Okay.
So with this new system, it eliminates us having to um, bring the prisoner.
Transport, got it.
Get back up to the town and bring them back down to our headquarters.
Very good, okay. Okay, any questions from the board?
No, just uh, uh, it's just a fantastic job, Steve, uh, receiving these grants, if you don't write them, you don't get them, so somebody's doing it, and we've received tremendous amount of money in grants, which is money that we don't have to put out for things that we really need, um, and things that make the uh, department run a lot better, a lot smoother. Thanks, Steve.
Yeah. Okay, next up, we have um, DPW, would you like to handle that?
Sure. Bill Joe Cornwall and Hudson, Department of Public Works, August twenty-twenty-four, trash collected for the month?
Do you have it, Doris? I don't have the tonnage on mine, we don't have that.
There's no tonnage.
Okay.
Okay.
Many.
Okay.
Say many for all of them?
A lot.
Just go to yard waste.
A lot, a lot, a lot, a lot, yard waste collected. For the month, a hundred yards, repairs and maintenance, village-owned vehicles and equipment, blacktop patching, maintenance of village-owned properties, sweeping of streets, cleaning of the farm property continues, sewer main maintenance. Notes, fall bulk cleanup except for August twenty-first, I'll be attending NICOM's Public Works School in Saratoga Springs from October twentieth through the twenty-third. Dave Halverson, Superintendent of Public Works.
Dave, could you advise um, which roads, we spoke about it this morning, um, that are going to be paved, and I know you're beginning prep work for those?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna be doing uh, milling and paving of River Avenue, Washington Street, Lafayette, and Elpis, and we will also be paving Churchill Street. We're not going to mill Churchill Street, but we're going to pave it.
Okay, so that's gonna be done over the next thirty to sixty days, is that what it is?
It'll be done in probably the next three weeks or so.
Okay, alright.
Three to four weeks.
And you're heading out on vacation tonight, right, so Wayne will be in charge? No, wait.
No, uh, in my absence, timelines is, yeah, everybody has his uh, number, I'll be available by phone.
Okay.
Gonna be away for a few days, but.
Gotcha, alright.
Joe should call tomorrow sometime.
Alright.
That's usually what happens, soon as, soon as Dave goes away, I got an emergency.
Alright. Just checking, Mike, just going back to the water department, you advised, was it Mountain Road that you got, that the water departments were placing?
We, we fixed a leak earlier today, it was, yeah, it turned out it was an old uh, service connection to a house, probably from the nineteen twenties, that had been disconnected, but never actually physically turned off from the water main.
Wow.
And during one of the, the rainstorms, it must have dislodged a rock in the creek that, that crushed the service line.
Wow, incredible, okay. Okay, let's see, now, let's see, we got Public Works, Water Department, Dave, you wanna?
Okay, um, Bill Joe Cornwall and Hudson Water Department, August twenty-twenty-four, monthly report, monthly production, twenty-seven million, six hundred and nine thousand gallons, daily average, eight hundred and ninety-one thousand gallons. We collected twenty-four samples under our approved water quality monitoring plan. Routine operations and maintenance under treatment, under transmission and distribution, seventy-seven utility markups were completed, water service shut-offs, turn-ons at owner's request, fourteen Sheldon Drive, fifty-one Spruce, sixty Duncan, ninety Avenue Way, and forty-six Firth Street. Herbops repaired, forty-six Firth, forty-four Washington, and eighteen Shadane Avenue. Service line leak repaired at three ninety-six Hudson Street, abandoned service lines disconnected at the Storm King Golf Club, one hundred uh, also one hundred and forty-seven Main Street. Performed startup of new eight-inch water main for Storm King Art Center, performed leak detection in the village. Under meters, we read commercial meters, four final meter readings were completed, eighteen residential water meters were replaced, one meter transmitter was replaced, five miscellaneous jobs completed, thirty, thirty-three water line inspections were completed. Under property maintenance, routine weekly, uh, weekly property mowing, uh, and weed whack hydrants, uh, placed into service, new landscape equipment trailer. Michael Trainer, Water Superintendent.
Alright, Mike, yeah, anything to highlight, Mike?
Um, I'll just note that the, the leak detection that was performed, we did locate a water leak in the Cliffside Park area of the village. Um, we, we estimate that it was leaking about a hundred and eighty thousand gallons of water per day. Um, it would never come to the surface, it was just leaking down into the ground. Um, the treatment cost for that is about sixteen hundred dollars a day, um, that we were paying to treat that, that unaccounted for water.
What prompted you to look over there?
Um, so our, our water treatment operators, they obviously saw an increase in the daily water production, but we weren't quite sure if it had to do with the summer weather. Um, but then they started to notice some operational changes out in the distribution systems, such as higher chlorine residuals in a certain area of the village, which will indicate that you have a, a, a large draw of water coming down that way. Um, and then we had one complaint of a low water pressure, um, so that drew us down into the Bayview Avenue Cliffside Park area, and we just, we had to call in a contractor with specialized equipment to find it, to pinpoint it, um, um, but once he, he pinpointed it, we fixed it the next day.
What was the address of that leak, Mike?
Thirty-four Grandview Avenue.
Oh, Grandview, okay.
So Mike, how long did you estimate that it was operating that way?
That, that was probably operating for a month and a half like that.
Wow.
You know, we, like I said, we knew our production numbers were up, but we weren't sure if it was because of the, the summer, people with irrigation systems and whatnot.
Understood.
But when we start to see other operational changes, that's what draws us to it.
Very good, thank you for getting on that right away. Okay, moving on to uh, New Windsor EMS, alright, their report for August twenty-twenty-four, with respect to personnel, they have two new part-time EMTs and one paramedic. Uh, they had two, two new volunteers and no staff injuries. As for operations, there were three hundred and eighty total dispatches, down from five hundred and two last month. One hundred percent of the calls were covered, so to date, that's three thousand, seven hundred and fifty calls for the year. Two hundred and fifty-five patients were transported, that's down from three twenty-two last month. Two hundred and thirty-three New Windsor nine-one-one calls, there were fifty-eight in the, in the town of Cornwall, and thirteen nine-one-one calls in the village. The average response time was six minutes, fourteen seconds in Windsor, six minutes, thirty-one seconds in Cornwall, five minutes, fifty-two seconds for Cornwall and Hudson. The Cornwall unit covered eleven calls in New Windsor, the New Windsor unit covered seven calls in Cornwall and the village, and the new ambulance for New Windsor arrives in December. As for administrative and other, the chief notes that the budget for the twenty-twenty-five is completed and submitted. A grant for the heart monitor from Senator Scoofus was received, sixty-one thousand dollars. Meetings were held with Assemblyman Ikus and Congressman Pat Ryan's office regarding funding opportunities. Um, striker purchase of a new heart monitors and stretcher system for new ambulance was made, it was three hundred and eight thousand, this is over three years at a zero percent interest. The purchase will give us the latest in cardiac care equipment and allow our BLS units to have access to now perform twelve lead EKGs. Independent living, independent living partnership with mental health providers is scheduled to start within sixty days. The Cornwall Fund Drive has been sent out, and funds will offset the ALS equipment, and the Cornwall narcotic ALS equipment is being installed this month. Well, the chief has noted, Chief Biggs has noted, Big, excuse me, that this has been the slowest period for call volume in over fourteen months. They're happy, everyone's healthy, yet this will affect their cash flow, this is mostly from the loss of ALS calls in the town of Newburgh. Um, this loss was expected, and this is the reason why they have projected a large decrease in revenue in next year's budget. And I know um, from speaking with the mayor, they've met, uh, the town and the village has met with Chief Big with respect to their proposed budget, so we're working on negotiating that, our next contract, because the contract ends um, in the next, is it, we're in, we're in September? I think it's, I think it's the first or second quarter, maybe the second quarter of next year, I think, is that what it is, Mike? Yeah, okay, okay, any questions with respect to EMS? Okay. Now, moving on to resolutions, alright, first one up is we have the permit, the building department permit fee schedule. So, if you recall, Joe McKay, myself, and Manny met, what, two years ago, Manny?
Two years ago, yes.
Yeah, two years ago, and we went through all the permit, the entire permit fee schedule. Um, we, the attempt was, and we did update them, cause they, the permit fees had not been updated for many, many, many years. Those were implemented, they were used, uh, we did receive, we did receive some complaints in regards to some of the, the permit fees uh, being a bit excessive. Manny uh, re- revisited the permit uh, fee schedule, I met with him, we spent a couple hours going over it. We reduced many of the, I would say twenty to thirty of the various fees in the, in the building department, and they're a bit more online with the, with the town fees. So that's good news for, for both us and for uh, village residents. Before we move to pass this, Manny, you had indicated that there were a few items on here that you had updated uh, with another reduced fee, additional, ones beyond the ones you and I had discussed.
Yes, I emailed a copy already, but you don't have it.
No, is this the one that's got the, it's, it's highlighted in yellow?
Yes, highlighted item, so a new fee is now, in our code already, but we're now being included in our fee schedule.
Oh, so.
Okay.
Got it, alright, so these are not, these are not new fees that that.
Yes, we're not in the fee schedule.
Dude, just we're not in the fee schedule, okay, alright, and these.
Let's go online, Doris.
And these fees again are in line with.
Yes, I can.
Okay, got it. Alright, so that being said, any, any discussion about the permit fees?
Just a, a couple points of interest. If, obviously, when we pass this, this will be online for everyone to view, so you don't have to guess about your fee schedule for any upcoming work or any work that you're doing. Um, also, um, uh, Jim and Manny uh, um, put a tremendous amount of behind-the-scenes work in this, and Joe helped, and everyone helped. This is, this is a tedious job, reviewing all these, but, you know, over the course of a year and, or more, we, we always receive complaints, and they're always based on what these other, what the other people charge, and, you know, why this, why this. So they really looked at all of them, uh, Manny has a lot of experience in other municipalities, he knows what fees are, but we, we tried to make everything fair, and I, I think you guys did a great job, cause there's a lot of work that went into this field. It's not that thick, but it's thick.
No, it, it is, and, and Joe was part and parcel of it, the, our first, our first go-around, and look, to, to residents' credit, they're the ones who, they're the ones who complained about it, both, not just contractors, but individual residents. And um, you know, just an, it's just an example, it didn't fall on deaf ears, we, we took it to heart, we looked at it, and, and we reduced them, and they should have been, so, Joe, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't.
Okay, I thought you were looking like you wanted to add something.
You wanna congratulate me, good, if there's any problems, we'll just move on.
Alright, I'm gonna make, I'll propose a resolution to um, accept the permit fee schedule as dated September sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four. As per document, and it includes five pages of perm, of the fee, permit fee schedule. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, any further, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks again, Manny, appreciate it.
Yes.
You're welcome.
Alright. What we got? Okay, appointment of two part-time police officers, so, we are, chief, how many police, how many part-time police officers are we down to now? Prior to hiring these two, uh.
We were down to.
We were down to, so what's the total amount of part-time police officers that we have?
Nine.
Nine, okay.
We're down to nine.
Okay, and just so people understand, it's, uh, we have, we have three, three full-time police officers, but obviously they take vacations and so forth, plus, with all the events that we have, and increased events, cause we have special event committees, we have Donahue Farm. It's, it's important that we have a, a larger pool of part-time, part-time police officers to handle those, so, and plus, we were down to, because two just left to pick up jobs at uh, James Lynch and Alyssa, Alyssa Sanchez?
No, it was Alyssa Sanchez went to the uh, City of Poughkeepsie Police, and John Peña actually.
Retired.
Retired.
Right, okay.
Full-time.
And what, and James Lynch had left, he.
He's, he's still with us, but he's, he's.
Potentially leaving.
In the process of uh, leaving, going to a full-time agency.
So what the chief did is, he, he canvassed um, some uh, some police officers looking for a. So, what the chief did is, he, he canvassed, um, some, uh, some police officers looking for a part-time. And he came up with, uh, two officers, both who we interviewed last week. And the board, the board liked quite a bit. Um, was overwhelming, our discussion about both of them. One is, um, Stephen Bunt, who is a police officer, worked for not only the town of Cornwall, but also the city of Newburgh. The other one is, uh, is Brian Gaten, right? And, uh, his parent, parents are village, are villager town residents. And, um, he previously worked for the New York City Police Department and then-
Town of Wallkill.
Town of Wallkill.
He's still full-time.
He's still full, right, still full-time with the Town of Wallkill. So, uh, Lori Beth or, or Dave, do you have anything to add in regards to him before I propose the motion?
Very good candidate.
Okay, so, I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Stephen Bunt as a part-time police officer to the Cornwall and Hudson Police Department. Officer Bunt's appointment is, is approved pursuant to the current collective bargaining agreement and is subject to the longest probationary period provided for by the Orange County Rules for the Administration of Civil Service Law as amended January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. Within one year of appointment, Officer Bunt is required to complete a two-week police officer refresher course as mandated by the New York State Department of Criminal Justice Services. Mr. Bunt will be sworn in as a part-time police officer with the Cornwall Hudson Police Department on Friday, September twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Um, may I have a second, please? Thank you, Dave, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, all right. I will make another motion to appoint Mr. Brian Gaten as a part-time police officer to the Cornwall and Hudson Police Department. Officer Gaten's appointment is approved pursuant to the current collective bargaining agreement and is subject to the longest probationary period for provided by the Orange County Rules for Administration of Civil Service Law as amended January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. The foregoing, uh, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just wanted to point out too, Stephen Bunt had, Stephen Bunt had a lengthy career. Um, Brian is younger, and it's good because we need some, we need some younger officers. He's got some experience, but we need some younger officers to interact with our youth. So, uh, he seems, um, they both seem very poised individuals, and I think they'll fit in well with our police department here and our residents. Moving on to Color Bash and the Barbie Movie Special Event. So, let me just see this, okay. All right, the Color Bash versus, okay. So, the Color Bash, if you recall, the Color Bash is a race that started a few years ago. Um, I was, I was part of the first one where they-
I'm afraid you're gonna push it.
Go ahead, you can describe it, Lori Beth, yeah, yes, I will.
So, the, the Cornwall Youth Committee, this will be our third year, uh, holding the Color Bash, where we have about a mile or so run, um, made specifically for families and small kids to be able to run it. And we, uh, have stations where we throw the color at them, we have shirts for purchase. Um, so they're white, so when you throw the, the colors at them, they're all different colors. Um, this year, we're going to hold it at Donahue Farm. So, we're starting at the, we're starting at the farm, the, the run will be down to eighteen towards Hudson Street. Then we're going to round onto Hudson Street, go in front of COH Elementary School, around the back of, uh, the gazebo. And then back to Donahue Farm with, I believe, nine color stations, might be six, not sure. Um, and we will have food trucks and some fun things for the kids, um, face painting. And then we are going to add, uh, the showing of the Barbie Movie that we got rained out, um, down, uh, the river. Um, so there'll be, let's see, what will we have for the movie? There'll be adult beverages, and again, the food trucks, oh, we'll have a band, we're having, um, the, oh, I forget their name. They're, they're young kids, but they play in this great band, what's, what are they called?
Frozen Peas.
Frozen Peas. There you go. So, we're gonna have a DJ, the Frozen Peas will play. Um, it's gonna be a great time, uh, then we'll play the movie.
I'm glad I didn't attempt to describe any of that.
Yeah, I was cringing, cringing when you were starting.
I was cringing. Very good, thank you very much, Lori Beth, for that description, it sounds like a great time.
And it's on October fifth, starts, the run starts at five.
All right, Dave, anything to add?
No.
Okay, so, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the Color Bash Road Race as well as the accompanying Barbie Movie that'll be held at Donahue Farm after the race on Sept-, uh, excuse me, on October fifth, twenty twenty-four. May I have a second, please? Thank you, Dave, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, all right. Color Bash, all right. Next up is we have Santa on the Farm Special Event. So, this one, do you want to take this one too, Lori Beth?
Sure.
Okay.
Um, Phyllis from the Rec Department, but it's not being held by the Rec Department. Phyllis, um, and the Donahue Farm Committee are having Santa on the farm, it's the first year they've done this. Um, I don't know too much, other than they're keeping it simple, they have a great Santa, um-
I can add-
That's all I know, okay, go.
It's, it's, it's pictures with Santa, but they're gonna have chocolate, uh, hot chocolate and donuts. And it begins at three PM on December seventh, so. So, I did add to that, okay. So, it sounds like another good event, and of course, Phyllis is involved, which is excellent, as well as the Special Events Committee. So, I will make a motion to approve the Santa on the Farm Special Event at Donahue Farm, um, hosted by Phyllis and the, and the special, the Donahue Farm Committee on December seventh, twenty twenty-four. May I have a second, please? Thank you, Dave, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we have the Orange County Water Authority Field Trips Special Event. All right, I'm gonna introduce it, then you can explain.
Go ahead.
Oh, no, go ahead, just do it, do it, it's just as easy.
No, I'm not really sure.
Okay, so, no, go ahead, you're gonna do it, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, the, let's see. The Orange County Water Authority puts on these programs, usually at Plum Point for, uh, different schools. Um, they have, like, they, they do some sort of fishing, they're waiting in the, in the river, they, science experiments. Um, uh, so they were supposed to do it at Plum Point, but since there's an investigation going on down there, it's closed off to the public due to a fire, I believe.
Yeah, did it burn, did, did the gazebo there burn down or something, Mike?
No, they had a fire in one of the, the bridges that leads to the park, the county park that's there.
Oh, really?
Yeah, um, and I think the fire was under investigation, which I think they've concluded their investigation. Um, but I think they're waiting on the, the OK for travel across the bridge. Don't quote me on that.
Okay, thanks. It's the school district that is sponsoring this, and the Orange County Water Authority is providing the instruction.
Um, and this is Lee Road School, they're requesting to use our, um, waterfront. Uh, they have, it's, it's going to be over three days from about nine in the morning till approximately two o'clock. They think the kids will be leaving there about one o'clock. Um, they're gonna use the waterfront, they want, like to also use the, um-
Gazebo.
No, we can't call it a sh-
Pavilion.
Yeah.
Pavilion, and, and the bathrooms.
And the bathrooms, yes, so, um, and they are requesting that the fees be waived, this is-
Oh, yeah.
Um, and let me see if there was any other requests. It's just that they use our area and that the fees are waived. There'll be about fifty, uh, students at each day.
So, that's, they're on two buses, probably, two buses.
Okay, so, thank you for-
Yeah.
Oh, you have, Dave?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's exciting for them to use our, our, the Cornwall area.
That's very good.
Yeah, because I'd love to get the- I think we can do Cornwall and Hudson Elementary School.
And also, just to give you a little background on the Orange County Water Authority, um, they help out multiple municipalities with their water systems and whatnot. They just recently finished a, closing on a piece of property over in New Windsor. They applied for a state grant, um, to purchase a piece of property to provide protection for the city of Newburgh watershed. Um, so, they, they have these educators that go into the schools and whatnot. We've gotten grants from them in the past as well for leak detection, as well as feasibility studies and stuff like that.
Very good, thank you, Mike. All right, I will make a motion to approve the Orange County Water, Water Authority, um, field trip sponsored by the Cornwall Central School District, um, for the Orange County, uh, Water Authority to instruct children on September twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and the thirtieth from about nine AM to two PM, um, down on the waterfront and to use the pavilion and obviously, the toilets. Um, and add to that, and that we will waive the fee, uh, for use of the park. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Dave, thank you, any further discussion?
Question.
Uh-oh, yes, Joe, go ahead.
Well, first of all, they indicate that they want to use Donahue Farm. I don't-
I meant Donahue-
No, no, the farm says Donahue Farm, I don't think that's what they mean. It, it's, it, but it doesn't matter. Presumably, the county is self-insured. Um, I see the-
Oh, we do?
What do you?
They have everything in.
Did they provide us with self-insurance, so I have this, I have the application form?
I just gave you the application, not the insurance.
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll take a look at the insurance, okay.
Do we have the insurance, okay.
Okay.
All right, so, I'll call the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you for checking on that, counselor.
That's why nobody likes the lawyers, so the little kids can't go to the river.
Oh, boy. Hmm, all right, now, moving on to other business. Let's start with the EV chargers, uh, charging stations. So, Bill Brain has been working on this for quite some time. Um, he has secured four different quotes. We don't have to do an RFP because the amount is under about thirty thousand dollars. Um, and I think that's why we don't have to do the RFP.
It's, I'm coming into it now, trustee Brain gave me the proposals, I, I-
You don't have to answer now.
Yeah, I mean, it would seem to be a specialized type service.
Right.
That you could probably just get quotes for, I'll, I'll take a look.
Okay, so we have, we have four quotes, yes, we've got four. Uh, Bill has narrowed it down, he, we, we spoke about it at the work session last week. Uh, we've picked the top, we've picked the top two, we've asked, uh, a counselor to review the same. Um, these charger stations would be, one would be down on the waterfront, and the other one is gonna be in the municipal parking lot, correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, that, the, I don't want to go into the, the, uh, the actual amounts right now, but, um, part two of this, though, is, they'll put in the charging stations, but then we also have to pay to put the feeder line into the charging station. So, that's a, that's a separate thing, just, just like the town had to do.
Right.
Okay?
So, we identified the drops, um, in conjunction with the, the vendors to make sure that they were placed in the right spot because they do require electric drops. And there are what, two, two units per Jim?
Yes.
Two plugs per, and we'll start out with these two, see-
See where it goes.
Yeah.
Um, and thank you very much, Bill Brain, for doing all this work. So, it looks like this is gonna be teed up, um, for a resolution next month. Next up, we have the Ethics Forum Online. So, the, New York State has a New York State mandated disclosure form for, for, uh, for members of the board, of the various boards, the Planning Board, the Zoning Board, Village Board, and, and Joe McKay, our counsel. So, we all have to submit the disclosure form. The current village code requires it to be in hard copy. Um, the Ethics Board in meeting determined that, um, they want to switch over to make it digitized. And so, they proposed that the disclosure form be submitted online. Um, so, sounds like a very, like, sounds like an easy idea, good idea, makes it easier for members of the, employees of the village uh, to complete the form and submit it online. It avoids the whole thing, the postage and sending it out and waiting for them to come back, because I'm always late submitting mine to. So, this will make it easier, a more streamlined process. Um, so, what, at this point, before we can pass it, Joe's gotta take, we'd have to actually amend the, the local village code so we can now do this in digits. The last portion of that, too, is, there is a control measure for this, and that is, the village clerk is the only one who has access to those forms, right?
Yeah, I think the, the language of the law now speaks in terms of mailing, you know? Not necessarily emailing, things like that. And to have a physical location that's only accessed by the clerk, so. So, I did meet with the Board of Ethics, as you say, they think that this would be a much easier way for people to complete the form. Um, it would just require modification to the law. So, I suggested to the chairman that he get the board's approval, and it sounds like the board's in favor of it. If you just direct me to go ahead, I'll start modifying the text of our local law to bring it, uh, make it a little more modern, how about, how about that?
I think we could do that. So, um, moving on to the Pro-Housing Community Program. So, this one is, let me just get this down, okay. Some notes in the site, all right, so, New York State has recognized that there's a, a housing shortage for all ages and income and, which negatively impacts the state economy as well as the local economy. And New York State is looking for each municipality to do their part to contribute to housing growth. And they've asked each community to adopt their proposed pledge, which, um, speaks to the openness of, um, uh, the growth for housing. Um, it went into a, now, this is not gonna, this, this pledge that we're speaking of, um, is going forward. There's no, there's no, we've looked at this in regards to, is there any impact on, if we do not take this pledge, is there any impact on our New York State Forward Grants? Because, because the information that's provided with this New York, with this Housing Community, Pro-Housing Community Program, um, there's definitely indication that going forward, that municipalities would be affected with the various different grants. Near, one of them being the New York Forward Grant, there's several others, like, six or eight categories of grants. So, if you don't, um, adopt this pledge, then it could affect, it could affect your ability, a municipality's ability to obtain certain grants, all right?
Is that right, Joe?
That's exactly correct.
Okay, so, just for the general public, that affects DASNY, which is a large grant for us. When we apply for DASNY grants, that's big.
Yeah.
Was that on the list?
Yeah, and I don't, the, as, as June said, there are, there's like a, a long list of, of grants. And, and Dave, as you know, DASNY does all kinds of different grants, so it may impact some or others, I'm, I'm not sure. But, but they're clearly listed.
Yep.
Yeah, so, so they have, they have, um, proposed a model resolution, which shows our openness to growing, growing our housing stock. And the resolution is essentially their proposed resolution, their model resolution, is a statement of values, not a commitment to execute everything that they have on their list. The town adopted this resolution, passed their pledge la- I believe in July. So, we've looked at it, I've looked at it in depth, Jim has, um, some of the member, the, the board has- Jim has, um, some of the member, the, the, the board has, we've had prior discussions about it, and Joe has looked in depth in this, too. We're not, we're, we're not in any rush to, to pass it tonight. It's just, at this point, it's information. We may, we may do it next, uh, next month or the month thereafter, but we just wanted to make sure we got this out, because we did spend some time really looking at this. We just did not want it to affect what we're getting, and want to know what will, what, if it'll affect anything going forward, which there's every indication if we don't. So, um, any further discussion from the board? Yes?
Uh, I just have some concerns about the pledge, not the pledge itself. I see that it's not really doing much, the pledge itself, but, um, my fear is what it will lead to, um, what we might be forced to do to our community, how we might have to change the way that we're living and, and, and how, how the village feels and looks, our day-to-day lives. I worry about the school districts having, our, our school district, our schools, um, kind of being maxed out currently. I know we, we don't have too much room to be adding kids, so I just, I have some concerns.
I think we all do.
Yeah, we, no, we all do. That's why we were looking at, we were looking at this very closely when we first got this. So, um, again, we're not, we're not looking to pass it tonight. It'll be brought up probably at our next, at our next meeting next month. And we'll, we'll go from there. But, again, we're kind of, I would say, a little, little bit stuck. You know, there's, there's certain things we have to, certain things we have to take into consideration. And it's not, yeah, go ahead, man.
This is in the 17th, where we're at.
Yes.
Is there somewhere where, where they find out more information about this?
You know, the, you just had their, their flyer.
Is it Ruffco, right? Ruffco?
Oh, Ru, it's Ruffco. Do we have anything posted on our?
Did you go to the hearing?
No, we'll do.
Or did you go?
I can't, I can't till next week, but I will.
Okay. Oh, that's right. So, so Doris will post it on our web, on our website. She's leaving tonight to go to a training, so we'll have it on, we'll have it posted by next week.
Jim, do you happen to know if there was minutes taken of the informational session held at Munger Cottage?
Or was it taped?
It may be on YouTube.
Jim went to that. I don't know. Yeah, sorry about that.
We'll find out about that. So you can watch that session. That was an open session.
The town did tape it.
It was taped.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, they did. Okay.
Okay, good.
Are we still talking about the Pro Housing information? If you simply Google "New York State Pro Housing Initiative," there's a, there's, on the State Attorney General's site, there's, there's a significant amount of information.
It's called the Pro Housing Community Program. Yeah.
Ruffco.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, and it's sponsored by Ruffco, which is the, it, it, it started with Ulster County and some other county, and then grew from there in regards to, in regards to housing. So, okay. Next up is the Hometown Heroes Banner and Holiday Lights on Utility Polls. So, a few months ago, we've been talking about this a little bit over the past couple of years. We wanted to initiate the Hometown Heroes banners on our utility polls, like many other communities have done so before. We had a meeting with the town, the head of, Commander of Post Three Five Three, American Legion Post Three Five Three, who's well-versed in this. He, he's the head of DPW in, in Greenwich, Connecticut. He's very familiar with the program. Bottom line is, we started looking into this. The town, because we got our New York Forward Grant, some of the monies can be used for our, I forget what the, the project is, the corridor project, the connector corridor project, I guess, is part of our New York Forward, um, for the, for these Hometown Hero banners. What happened in the interim, that was, we met a few, two or three months ago. Since then, a couple of things have happened. One is the Greater Newburgh Rotary Club reached out to us. And apparently, they have, we received an email, um, and they have spearheaded this program for municipalities in this whole area. And they, they advised us, they were willing to spearhead this on, on the administrative end. They have contacts for the banners, production of the banners, as well as the hardware for the banners. And they indicated that, uh, at least the banners themselves, who they purchased them from, they have a, they have a trusted vendor that they've been using for years for other municipalities. They're veteran-owned. And so, they were willing to, um, take the ball and run with it, so to speak. The village itself would pick, um, who would be on the banners. And we do have, right at, at this point, kind of an ad hoc committee of people, one of them being, one of the members of the Village Board, myself, the Commander of Post Three Five Three. Who am I missing? Uh, there was someone, I can't think. There are going to be a couple of other people, but we're still kind of, we're still kind of, this is just getting its legs. The objective is, is to, oh, wait, hold, let me, before I get to that point, part two of this, besides the Greater Newburgh Rotary Club, Walden Savings, the President of Walden Savings, shot us an email, and they were willing to sponsor the first fifteen banners, uh, to pay for it. So, lucky enough, I mean, you know, Walden Savings is a great bank, um, they're willing to put up the money. They're not going to get involved in choosing it. The objective is, is to get, at this point, is to just have seven of them, seven banners up, and we're trying to get them up by November, uh, by November, honor before November eleventh, before Veterans Day.
Veterans Day.
Yes. And we have, we have several people, um, that we ha, you know, we have in mind, we have Medal of, Medal of Honor recipients and so forth. So, the first seven, you know, we're still in the works of picking it out. Now, it also includes, um, it would also include first responders, you know, fire, firemen and, and police officers. It would also, we're also spearheading, it's, uh, it's for those who have already passed away, not necessarily for living hometown heroes. There may be, there may be some, some exception, uh, exceptions to that. Part two of it, part three is, do you want to speak to the, the lighting? The lights, yes, the holiday lights.
So we'll be doing seven banner, uh, polls, and then fifteen, um, snowflake light poles. So, yeah, we're in, I'm in the process of, we, we submitted all the polls to Central Hudson, so we just have to get their okay, um, and continue with the process purchasing the lights. I know you guys are dealing with the banners. I'm gonna do the, um, the snowflakes, and uh, then hopefully we'll get them all up, and it's gonna be great. It's gonna span from right about St. Thomas down to Cherry.
Okay.
And then the town is, do you want to talk about the town?
Yeah, if you want to, yeah.
Oh, so the town has identified seventeen polls, and I imagine that would start probably on the other side, near the hospital?
I don't know exactly where they're.
But anyways, they've identified seventeen polls, and they're, so it'll be, um, it'll be a solid all the way through.
Yeah, and they're, they're also doing the, the snowflake.
Right.
So it'll be throughout.
And rather, um, well, you can explain how you came to the snowflake, because people may wonder why, you know?
Oh, um, just so we can keep them up longer. You know, um, if, if we chose, uh, something more dedicated to Christmas, or to Hanukkah, or a holiday, you know, we would need to take them down more quickly. But a snowflake, we can keep up through the winter.
All right. So, anything further? I just want to thank, um, Walden Savings Bank for stepping up.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, it's huge.
I think the estimated costs are what, Lori, about eleven hundred a pole?
Yeah.
Right, and then the, and the banners, I know the banners that Walden is, um, giving the money towards, those banners are like, I think Greater Newburgh Rotary Club sent their like two thirty or the two seventy-five. So, we thank Walden Savings Bank, um, for doing this. Now, moving on to, uh, for your information, starting with, okay, this Saturday, it's twentieth, right, this Saturday? Yes. September twentieth, movie at Dunnehew Farm, The Great Outdoors. What, Mike, what time is that start at?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. Okay.
That's Friday, twentieth.
Oh, Friday. Got it. Okay, sorry.
The, the, the band will start at six, playing until dusk.
And the band is, uh...
It's, it's John Joy's Band.
John Joy's Band, okay.
Special guest appearance by Dominic Crisco.
Oh, yeah? Oh, outstanding. All right, very good. All right, and, okay, so, next up is Saturday, September twenty-first. We have the Motivate Five K Race. That's sponsored by Motivate Physical Therapy. Dave goes there, and I go there. I don't want anybody else that goes down that goes there. But Christine's great. She sponsored this last year, and that road race begins at ten, I believe, Chief, ten?
Correct.
And it starts at the Firehouse. And I know that they have, it's, they're sponsoring, the, the money that's going to be raised is going to be donated, donated towards, yeah, Al, the Alzheimer's Fund. And I know they, they have raffles and other stuff going on there. So if you're, if you're looking to win something or the fifty-fifty, stop by, help her out. Then in October, we've got on October second, Dunnehew Committee Meeting at Dun, at Dunnehew Farm. On October fifth, as we said before, we have Color Bash at five PM, followed by the Barbie Movie at six-thirty at Dunnehew Farm. And then, um...
Color Bash starts at four-thirty. The race starts at five.
Okay. Race starts at five. Okay. And then, on October fourteenth, which is Columbus Day, the Village Hall will be closed. So, last up is public comment. Barbara, would you like to make a public comment?
Well, a couple of things I'd like to... October nineteenth is the yard sale.
Oh, Jesus.
Oh, God, yes, forgot about that. October nineteenth.
Actually, we had it in the, uh, it was in...
Well, we did, oh, the yard sale. I'm thinking of, I'm thinking of bulk pickup.
It was in, uh, Dave, my report.
That's the twenty-first.
Yeah.
But October nineteenth is the yard sale.
Yard sale, okay.
Um, you were talking about the, um, I guess in the Treasurer's Report, this, this sewer capital fund.
Yes.
Which I spoke about last month. It kind of flies in the face of what we're doing with water rates, which is nothing, I guess.
I take exception to that, but go ahead.
Well, then tell me.
Well, we, the, the Water Committee met all last year, and we're in the process of, and Mike can explain it, because he's the head of this committee, to look into, look into fixing our water, updating our water rates.
Okay.
Now they're calculated.
Okay.
So that is part two, Barbara.
Okay. But it's not happening with any urgency, it seems like. This has been going on for a while. But I just, I just want to say to the board that in two thousand and seven, the village had a debt of nine million dollars, and that, and most of that debt was water. And we, as the owners of the water, um, such system, um, we shouldered that debt. We paid it. And our friends in the town didn't come to us and say, "I'll help you out with that." So there seems to be a reluctance on the part of the board to, to handle this water situation, this water rates. And, you know, we're doing, right now, um, the village, we're, we're doing this capital fund for sewer. Every other mon, every other month, I, I get a charge for sewer, and so does everybody else. But, you know, if some, and, and, you know, I think that probably was prudent to do that. But with the water rates, um, we have dams, we have infrastructure, we have filtration plant, many things could go on with this water fund, with, with these obligations that we have to meet. And if we don't, you know, and, and the town's not going to help us. So, that will be on village residents, and we're already doing a, a capital fund. So, to me, it's like, the village, um, taxpayers are going to be hit on both ends, unless we step up and, and do something with these water rates, so that, you know, we have a fund.
With regards to, with regards to the, uh, the sewer, we initiated the sewer capital fund because we have to pay our portion of...
I get it.
Which is about forty percent.
Right.
But we also have to pay if, if, if the Federals, you know, the federal government comes up with something that has to go on with the filtration plant, or the dams, or the wells, or whatever, that's going to be on us, too.
Yes.
So if we're not asking the town to, you know, the town paid eighty percent more than the village for years and years and years and years and years, and then, you know, now it's down in the thirties some, thirty percent somewhere. So, you know, it just seems to me like it's really, um, unfair to not address this. And there, there is a definite reluctance on the part of the board to do it.
I, I don't think there's a reluctance. I think that we're, we're, we're working on, we're, Barbara, Jim brought the, Jim brought this up. We had a meeting about this.
I, I know there was a board, you know, an advisory board and all this sort of thing, but time is passing.
Understood.
And I've had a conversation with Mike. We've talked about it.
Okay, so Mike would...
So, just, uh, a point of clarity, the, the town residents do assist the village in paying off those debts, because that, those debts are attributed to the water fund, which the town residents pay into.
Well, they did until the rate went down.
No, they still do. All their water rates, all their fund, that goes into the water fund.
But they pay...
And they pay, and they, and they pay a premium.
But we were, I mean, we need to be running it like a business.
And, and...
And it doesn't seem like we are.
And to your point, um, and to Jim's point, I just received an email from a company. They did a rate study in the city of Newburgh, and I got a proposal from them for the October Work Session to discuss with the board, to do a rate study, um, because there are several ways that rates can be configured. And, and they're very familiar with having municipalities where one municipality owns the system, but the other municipalities use the system. They've developed rates study, the rate formulas for that as well. So don't think that we're not moving on it. We are.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we, we, or it's, we, we met for, what, eleven, I don't know, eleven sessions over eleven months or whatever. It's, it's, could, yeah, could we move faster? But the board, but the board, but the board meets once a mon, the board meets once a month, or, we were having bi, pretty much bi-weekly to...
And, and we're also meeting for a, um, the, the committee is also working on the drinking water, source water protection through New York State. So there are other, there are other things going on.
And what Doug, what happened is, is when we were looking at our, the water infrastructure or our water rates, that then dug held into, well, look, if we're going to look at this, we can't just leave the sewer system alone. We've got to look at both of them comprehensively. And when we, when we last left it off, when we had our last meeting, it was decided at that point that Mike was going to start reaching out and looking into, who can we get an expert to come back to us and provide us with, and us getting, gauging an expert in coming up with a, a updated water rate system.
Well, it's, it sounds like another study is on the horizon to look at rates now. Hallelujah. That's, that's...
Thank you very much, Barbara. We appreciate it. Okay. Now, I'll leave it up to any, any alibis? Any, are we missing anything?
I don't think so.
So why don't we go around the horn, and we'll start with Dave? Anything to add, Dave?
I am good.
Okay. Lori Beth?
I do not have anything to add.
And, um, I would just like to say thank you to all the department heads and your, your personnel, um, for everything you're doing for us, getting us through this past summer, and, uh, we will see you next month. Can I have a, I'll make a motion to adjourn our meeting?
Second. Can we meet for just a few?
Oh, actually, yes, before we adjourn, we do...
You can close the meeting. There'll be no action taken.
Okay.
But I do like, would like to just update the board on a couple of matters.
Okay, all right. So can I get a sec, uh, I already got a second, Dave? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Mike, do you know the date of the tree lighting?
I believe tentatively, we were just talking about that, November thirtieth. It's going to be a different date in the towns. It's going to be a different date than the town's.
Yeah, because the town was texting me.
Yes. Yeah. We're doing it. Thanks.